One to tonight's. We will start off with the consideration of the approval of the agenda, so.
Second.
We'll call the roll.
Longley.
Hi.
Briesman.
Hi.
Pittman.
Hi.
Hi.
Next up then we have the approval of the minutes from the April thirtieth and the May fifth meetings. Any questions on those minutes?
That's so move.
Second.
Further comments? We'll call the roll.
Briesman.
Hi.
Pittman.
I'm.
Knighton.
Hi.
Hi.
Next up then we have consideration of the approval of the consent calendar. Any questions there? I'll settle. Sorry. The comments? We'll call the roll.
Pittman.
I'm.
Knighton.
Hi.
Longley.
Hi.
Briesman.
Hi.
Next up then we have a proclamation under the business of the mayor. This is for Memorial Day, which is coming right up. Um, Patrick and Philip, any comments before we have the proclamation voted on?
Uh, just make a short comment to let everybody know that you're invited uh to out to the VFW. Uh, we're having a program. It starts at eleven AM. And uh immediately after the program will be serving lunch that's a free will donation.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or motions on the proclamation?
Both to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Knighton.
Hi.
Longley.
Hi.
Briesman.
Hi.
Pittman. Hi.
If you guys wanna come up in front of me, I'll read the proclamation. Well, brave men and women of our armed forces have valiantly defended this great republic in its many years wars and conflicts to ensure our rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas many of these brave men and women made the ultimate sacrifice and laid down their lives in the service of our country. And whereas all men and women who have defended our nation valiantly, so that we, the citizens of the United States of America, do enjoy the freedoms granted to us by our constitution, they should have their memories preserved for eternity. And whereas it is our intention to remember deceased friends and relatives that are dear to us. Now therefore, I Dean Andrews, Mayor of Trousville, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Monday, May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five as Memorial Day, and urge all citizens of our community to take a few moments and reflect upon the lives of the valued men and women who have defended our nation and the lives of all of our dear friends and relatives. So we appreciate you guys, you know, making us aware of this. You know, we should be thinking of this every day of the year, but uh it's nice that we at least put some heavy emphasis on it on Memorial Day and and honor those who have given their lives and and like you say, in service to our country. And uh we appreciate the recognition and you guys' effort to keep us aware of that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for your services.
Thank you.
I guess one more thing touching on Memorial Day on the uh this Friday, we'll be out in in the cemeteries uh putting flags out. So if uh you have a veteran out there in cemetery and you get missed, give us a call at the VFW and we'll carry out and place a flag on that parade.
Great, thank you. Next up that we have a public hearing. This is on the fiscal year five budget amendment. So we'll open that hearing and do we have any written comments received? Anybody?
I don't know.
Any oral comments tonight?
Sir.
We'll call the roll.
Longley.
Hi.
Briesman.
Hi.
Pittman.
I'm.
Knighton.
Hi.
So then we'll consider resolution forty-three twenty-five, which is amending the current budget from fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and discussion on that.
Yep, so budget amendments, we're looking to amend the fiscal year twenty-five budget that we're currently in, coming coming to the end of it here at the end of June. Um, anytime that you have a function within your expenses of your budget that you anticipate going over, whether it be public safety, parking recreation, um, any of the different functions that they have, um, you have to amend your budget. And so we've had additional costs in some areas. Um, some of that due to additional revenues coming in, some of that due to timing of when monies come in, when monies go out. Um, and additionally, this year we have, you know, we had actually the housing authority out from underneath umbrella of the city. So all then you know, the loan that we received for the city hall, police remodeling and pool project all came in this year too. So all those things gotta come into play when figures in what um what your amendment is um for. And so um this year is unlike is is like any other year. We have an amendment because you're planning eighteen months in advance, you don't don't know what's gonna happen. So so we look to approve the resolution tonight to approve the fiscal year twenty-five uh amendment.
Questions for Steve?
I'd move to approve them in.
Second. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Briesman.
Hi.
Pittman.
I'm.
Knighton.
Hi.
Longley. Hi.
Next up then we have a consideration of an amendment to the street closing request for a party in the park. Mark, you want to come up?
This one you thought you were done. We are requesting uh use of the two hundred block of our Jackson Street. I've had it extended under our street closing request. We're having a special touch a truck event that night. Um, we have quite a few vehicles coming in. We didn't think we're gonna have the Scott pedal cars that night, which they take up one of the streets. And now we have them and the barrel trains with lots of activities, which is great. But we need a little bit more room now. So this is all, this is a one-time deal. This is not for all four events. It's just due to the May thirtieth event. I have talked to all the businesses along that block and they're fine.
Questions for Mark?
Second.
Chief, could sign off on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other comments?
Well, then we're thankful that police, uh ambulance and fire are all gonna be uh present there and represented. So they'll have a chance to meet with the the public and talk to them and explain their vehicles.
We'll call the roll then.
Pittman.
I'm.
Knighton.
Hi.
Longley.
Hi.
Briesman.
Hi.
Right, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Except that we have consideration, the first reading ordinance one-one-nine-one, and this is vacating a portion of abandoned thirteenth Avenue in Charles City. Question here.
Yes, so what this is, this is something that we came across with the um with the new ownership of the that White Farm area over there. We found a piece of air parcel that's listed as being um city property. If you look, if you look at it, it would appear to be where thirteenth Avenue would have originally gone if it did not curve to follow the railroad track. So it's, it makes sense that it was, you know, dedicated city street. Um, and so uh planning zoning has reviewed this. They had initial discussion. They set and held a public hearing um May seventh. And I know they they did not have any comments or concerns shared at that time. So they recommended approval to the city council. So we're having our first reading tonight on this. Um, this really looks like it would be more like a housekeeping manner just to make sure that that's all, you know, dedicated over the the uh the new property owner and and they're covering the 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 minor, you know, costs we have involved with that for brightest time and whatnot. So um, yeah, I guess we would recommend that the council consider the first reading for um resolution number forty-four twenty-five on ordinance eleven ninety-one.
I mean, I think from my perspective, PNC has approved it. It's clearly not in use as a as a street, so it just, it makes sense to go ahead and vacate it. So I would move to approve the first reading of ordinance one-one-nine-one.
That's second.
Any further comments?
Yeah, you know, timing really isn't of of matter of necessity with this one. So I think we're, you know, probably just proceed normally with having the first reading and doing the second and third as as they come.
Okay. We'll call it all.
Knighton.
Hi.
Longley.
Hi.
Briesman.
Hi.
Pittman.
Hi.
All right, we will then have the first reading of ordinance one-one-nine-one.
Ordinance one-one-nine-one, an ordinance vacating a portion of abandoned thirteenth Avenue in Charles City, Iowa.
Thank you. And then we would consider a resolution forty-four twenty-five, which would be setting a public hearing for this ordinance.
Salute.
Second.
And that will be on public hearing will be two weeks. First meeting in June.
June second.
All right, any other comments? Call the roll.
Longley.
Hi.
Briesman.
Hi.
Pittman.
I'm.
Knighton.
Hi.
Right. Next up, when we have resolution forty-five twenty-five, and this is a vending uh parkland agreement between Dean Eads and the city of Charles City. Do you want to fill us in here?
Yeah, yeah. So this is a, we we've had a good deal of discussion about this, you know, certainly in the last um few weeks, and we approved the agreement at the last council meeting. Um, and in in large part, everything that we talked about in their requirements and whatnot, um, the owner, Dave, is is agreeable to. Um, there's just a couple of things that he requested to change, one of them being, you know, extending in through October as we talked about that night, but we're going to look to see if that was something he wanted to do and have more discussion on that. So um so, yeah, as we presented, it's largely, you know, it's largely agreeable. Just the two things are, it uh updates some listed names on there. Um, you know, as far as who the ownership is, who's signing in. We also talked about that use of area being just that eighty feet, those street parking stalls. And uh Dave commented that the panels that he uses are ten feet each. And so those will be eighty feet, but he says there's a bracket that goes on the outside of each one of those that might project out. He said like eight inches. So I said, well, why don't we just add a foot on either side and just to, you know, you you want to be sure on that. So so we're changing that eight to eighty-two. Um, and then delaying the start for this year. That was, I guess I wasn't surprised on that. I mean, we 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 made the start date May first, but this first year he's not gonna have it ready to use until maybe sometime in June. His goal is to be ready by the fourth of July. But he asked if he could change that from from a May start to a June start. And then, of course, what I mentioned before, the October extension through October. And I told him, I said, that's something you're gonna wanna do. Just, you know, let us, you you need to let us know actually pretty early in September, because the meetings in September are pretty early, but we, so we can approve it. He said, can I just make that request now? So I said, okay. I said, well, I'll take it back to a council meeting to approve that. And so he said, he was, you know, fine with that. So uh we, so we put in a a a a start date for this year to be June first, otherwise the next two years will be May first. And each each of the three years will extend through October thirtieth. So so with the idea of that will be done and gone out there by Halloween night. So those are the changes. Um, otherwise, yeah, everything else is as we discussed.
Comments?
Rather than try to make those various amendments, we just concluded provision that this is replacing the prior agreement that was approved.
I move to approve it.
Second.
No comments?
I'm excited to actually see this um with it likely being up by July fourth and sometime in June, party in the park will be ongoing. Fourth of July festivities at Central Park. So it'll be interesting seeing how it operates and what issues, and then come back and reverse those at a future your uh work session.
So definitely be a good one to have an after after meeting, see how things went and even know.
So from a staff perspective, if this is successful, then we plan on creating an ordinance for Parkinson in the future.
We will, I mean, if that's up to you guys.
Right.
Uh, but absolutely. If if we we think that something's gonna be a uh ongoing thing that we're, you know, to model and do in different parts of town. I mean, I've I've gotten actually, yeah, I'm I was at Cedar Falls or our things where I live has a specific parklet ordinance that we could let's say steal, borrow, not reinvent the wheel. Right? So, yeah, it'll totally depends. Maybe if this is, if this is a success, then maybe that's something we'll look to other places. It'd be good to have a policy in place.
So Brad, though, I mean, an ordinance would protect the city too more than an agreement, correct?
Yeah, it probably just depends on whether we have other requests or not. If we just have one or two, it may be easier to try to deal with those on an individual basis and tailor their arrangements as needed. But if we're we're to have, you know, multiple requests, it probably makes sense to have an ordinance to try to address and organize and uh those multiple requests. So I guess it just depends on how much interest there might be.
If I can see your point about if you just have a couple, they're gonna each be totally, or not totally, but have a lot of differences and you're gonna have to make variations anyway, so. Any further discussion? We'll follow all.
Briesman.
Hi.
Pittman.
Hi.
Knighton.
Hi.
Longley.
Hi.
Right. We will have consideration of resolution forty-six twenty-five, and this is approving a memorandum of an understanding between the Charles City Fire and the St. Charles Township for the fire truck refurbishment projects.
Yeah, so yeah, something we've reviewed and approved is refurbishment of those two engines. Um, and as we discussed, you know, they're jointly owned between the city and St. Charles Township. Um, typically a seventy percent, thirty percent ownership or where we are seventy percent of the ownership. You know, so then there was discussion on delivery and pickup and of those different costs. And and as we discussed that, I thought this is something we really probably really should have in writing, because this is gonna take over a year to get all this done, you know. And so let's, this is put an MOU together in place that that spells everything out, who's responsible for what. Um, so so we had Brad uh draft this uh MOU agreement and uh um, as my understanding, St. Charles, you know, they've, I don't know if they've met yet to review it, but they were aware of it and they're ready to sign off on it. So um, it's back to the city just to uh approve this, and then we'll have everything set to get our engine out the door and get the first one refurbished.
I think this makes sense just to put it in writing, so I would move to approve.
A second. I just noticed when I looked at this before, but in the body of the agreement, number one, shared cost, number item three under that, we talked about transport for transportation of engine two fifty-one and two fifty-one two and some. Yeah. Good catch. Not that it's huge, anybody with a brain would have figured it out.
We have.
We will make that correction.
Don't fit in that category.
What do you mean, the other two fifty-one?
Any other comments? We have a motion in a second.
Yep.
We'll call the roll.
Pittman.
I'm.
Knighton.
Okay.
Longley.
Hi.
Briesman.
Hi.
Next up that we have a first reading of ordinance one-one-nine-two, and this is amending section one point six point six the UDO and for the authorization to construct more than one duplex on a lot land lot or tract. Stevie, on a, tell them what planning and zoning talked about.
Yeah, yeah. So so this this change is in regards to um duplexes and how the definition of them within the the UDO. Um, currently, and it's 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 something that's come to light it with the development of the Kating project, where they wanna do a multi-family residential development, uh, which will include duplexes, fourplexes, and sixplexes. However, our UDO states that duplexes are not considered multi-residential. And so the the basis of this change would be to allow duplexes to be uh considered multi-residential and and allowable to be built on more than a single parcel. Because multi- multi-family residential allows you to build multiple units on one parcel. But right now duplexes are not considered multi-residential, which is a little bit, you know, it's it's almost like you're reverse engineering that a little bit where, you know, okay, you know, what's allowable and one's allowable and two uh zoning are one, are two, and then are two and are three. So it usually reverses through, but, you know, is there, I guess, is there a time where you wouldn't want duplexes allowed in multi-family residential? And usually it's not a concern if you have something that's less dense in a more dense area. The only thing I guess I could come to mind with as far as what would be a a con, you know, the pros and cons. The con to doing this would be if you're doing a duplex, maybe you're not using that space to its fullest potential, right? And building it to the 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 density level that it's designed for. But, you know, I think in, you know, what's being planned here, it seems like it would fit right in, you know, to the rest of the development. It would seem to be a logical change. And and speaking with other communities that have worked, you know, with these type of projects, not still in particular, they're they're that wasn't even a question, because their duplexes are considered multi-residential. Just, I think it was something that came about when we redid our our code of ordinances or, you know, and uh and uh read and did the UDO that it states that. So um, that's that's the uh the 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 idea behind the change is that you can then put duplexes in a higher density area. And so tonight we look at having that first reading and and setting public hearing for the second reading on um June second. And at that, we may, well, you know, assuming this moves forward and you pass this tonight, we would love to waive that third reading on June second, because this is a time sensitive um matter. Um, and so we want to have this approved and passed if it's a direction we want to go um by June second, because the that workforce tax credit application is due in in early June. So.
One. One unique thing about the Kating project that prompted this too is, if you recall, their plan is to purchase that large lot, and they aren't going to subdivide it. It's just gonna remain one single tax parcel. So in a normal development, they would come in and subdivide it, and you'd have multiple lots, and you could place a duplex or multi-family on that lot. But what our code says is if you only have one lot, you can only put one duplex on there. So in order to allow them, like Steve said, do multiple duplexes on this lot, we had to amend the code so that more than one duplex could be placed on a on a single lot. Which is kind of the uniqueness of how they're developing this parcel is what led to the change.
They're gonna maximize their their green space, basically.
You know, I mean, again, we've got uh PNC has has met on this and, you know, approved this recommendation. Um, and then it, to me, it it just makes sense. When I hear multiple family dwelling, my brain automatically says, well, anything more than single family home, and that starts with duplex. So um for me, it just, it makes sense. So I would uh move to approve.
Okay. And further comments? Call the roll.
Knighton.
Hi.
Longley.
Hi.
Briesman.
Hi.
Pittman.
Hi.
So we will then have the first reading of ordinance one-one-nine-two.
Ordinance number one-one-nine-two, an ordinance amending the Charles City Unified Development Ordinance to authorize the construction of more than one duplex upon a lot or tract upon the recommendation of planning and zoning and approval of the city council.
Thank you. We would consider resolution forty-seven twenty-five to set the public hearing for this ordinance on June the second. So.
Second.
We'll call the roll.
Longley.
Hi.
Briesman.
Hi.
Pittman.
Hi.
Hi.
Next up is resolution forty-eight twenty-five, and this is approving the purchase of a new squad car in the police department. Anderson is here with us. Need this one?
It stated last week, we're looking at purchasing another Ford Inceptor. Um, and we got the bid from the state bid down in Milwaukee, uh forty-seven six hundred. That's for a stripped car. That's not for an outfitted. So they also do the outfitting, but that's another charge.
Since we discussed the the local bids and all that stuff at the workshop, I would some approval.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Any changes since last week on this?
Yeah.
Call the roll.
Briesman.
Hi.
Pittman.
I'm.
Knighton.
Hi.
Longley.
Hi.
Thank you. You. Next is resolution forty-nine twenty-five, this is improvement in parking waiver for Cedar Valley Properties. Discussion.
Yes, so this is a request from uh Cedar Valley Realty to uh get a waiver and uh an extension on the the vacant lot. They have a thirteen-hundred Gilbert Street there. We uh notified uh Mr. Hegg that that the the items being stored on that lot cannot be stored there until it was paved. He'd had some initial discussions with uh Brian Sullivan, our former engineer in training, uh about getting that paved. And so we followed up uh to uh make sure that, I guess that was gonna happen and to get the the items removed from that lot. Uh, otherwise he could, he could seek a waiver and and the waiver is to, he'll be able to allow to keep items on that lot up until that time that he has it paved. And so it it went to planning and zoning. Um, they uh approved a recommendation and also gave a six-month um extension, I believe, um to that. So he has until um in November to get that accomplished. But uh this would um basically waive those parking lot provisions temporarily so that he could remain to keep things stored there and given an opportunity to have it paid, which I believe he intends to have done this summer.
You know, without um him having something lined up and at least being on their schedule for June or July, a six-month waiver would seem more than more than adequate. But since he has something lined up, um and we know that sometimes things don't always happen when you expect, uh seems to make sense. So I would move to approve resolution forty-nine twenty-five.
Second. I think Steve mentioned he did want to confirm. We we have asked him to remove the items pending approval. They've not been removed, but I guess he did want let council know that we've made that. We did make that request more than one time.
Yes.
Further comments?
So if it's been by November, it's a win. If.
Call the roll.
Pittman.
I'm.
Knighton.
Hi.
Longley.
Right.
Briesman.
Hi.
Just to restate, it is a municipal infraction if it's not done by this new deadline, correct, Brad?
Correct.
And the municipal fraction penalties are?
It's up to seven hundred and fifty dollars per day.
Per day.
Generally, we request seven hundred and fifty dollars or a thousand if it's a second offense.
Is there a penalty for clearing the lot as requested?
By. We aren't sure. I guess we will work with Mr. Hegg that on that.
I mean, we were initially heading down that path. But since we did finally get a request from him to take it to plans, I mean, make that request or recommend to you, we we then held off on signing him or officially penalizing.
Good, thank you. Next, resolution fifty twenty-five. This is support of the workforce housing tax credit application for the Kating Union Place project.
Yes, yeah. So the uh the housing project that that Katie is working on called Union Place, they're gonna be making, as I mentioned before, a workforce tax credit application, which will be due here in June. And so they have been working on the process of collecting letters of support. Um, and so we have uh from the city, they've requested a resolution of support, which is what you see attached. And basically shows, you know, their uh their investment in this project is about ten and a half million dollars, because, you know, they're putting in all infrastructure, streets, roads, water, sewer, um sanitary sewer, storm sewer. And um they will be uh doing all that initially. The the latest plan, you know, shows a hundred and thirty-eight units. The, the latest plan, you know, shows a hundred and thirty-eight units, you know, I think we're getting closer to knowing. If that's the final number, I think that's probably going to be close. The way it sounds, they are planning on doing that in two phases, so the first phase will be about seventy units. And then, you know, they wish to, you know, fill those up and then, you know, once those reach a certain point, then build this, the second set. But they will be putting in the infrastructure all at once, so maybe they're committing to do with the full project. So, but this year will be that, that love of support, talks about their investment, talks about our investment, right, we have the tax abatement, we have the ground that the city and ADC is. Is donating to the project and they have, they are going to be using this for their tax credit application, so. Appreciate the council passing this, so I can add this to their list of support.
Seems like everybody's put a whole lot of time and effort into making this thing. Reality is kind of hard not to take this next step, so. That'll be, I would go to approve.
Second.
Other comments, questions?
I just, like we've said, I've said all along is this is a big win for the city, I mean, even. At this juncture where they're going to start preparing the site, we have local businesses that are going to be able to bid, bid into this project. From sewer, you know, whatever services that we provide, plumbing, heating. It's a big win for, I think, potentially for businesses here, it's a big win for our community members, it's going to domino. So that many units, we could potentially see, you know, our. Census count go very high because of this. I don't think they'll have a problem filling in. And, but that's going to translate to every other aspect of the city from the school, you know, more kids in school and, you know, that's the business side of schools, the number of kids you have, I mean, it's just. It's going to domino in all of our aspects, I'm very excited for this.
Your comments? Call roll.
Knighton.
Hi.
Lumley.
Hi.
Briesman.
Hi.
Pittman.
Hi. Right.
Anyone received that he misrelated his correspondence this last two minutes?
I have none.
Brad, anything else tonight?
No.
Brittany, do you have anything for us?
Um, just that we're going to meet Wednesday ninth and twenty-first at six o'clock for this Wednesday night. In here, in the restroom here.
Six P M.
Yes.
Thank you. So administrative report.
Well, the first thing I have is my official resignation letter, which is attached. So I guess, I'll probably, I'll probably just read that. Dear Mayor and Council, please accept this letter as formal notification that. I'm resigning my, from my position as city administrator for the city of Charles City. With my last day in government being July fourth, twenty twenty-five, and my last day in the office will be June twentieth, twenty twenty-five. This is, this decision comes as I have accepted new job opportunities as the city administrator for the city of Clear Lake, Iowa. I want to express my sincere gratitude to the mayor, city council staff. And citizens of Charles City for the opportunity to serve as your city administrator for the past eleven plus years, I've. Truly valued the support I've received from everyone, and I am proud of the many positive accomplishments we have achieved together. For the community. With even more progress on the horizon, this is not an easy decision. And my family and I have made many friends in the community and we have grown to love Charles City and it's our home. Thank you very much for the labor and support during my tenure, sincerely, Steve yours. Thank you.
Thank you. We will accept your resignation, Regent, we hate to. See you go, but yeah, good luck to you and as you move on your next chapter of your life too.
All right, so that's all the way it's done, and the next thing I have is. For it, we, we have, we have a proposal from S E H to start doing the study on that next well. We talked a little bit about as we're repairing this one, do we, do we need to look, we have three wells. Two of them are good producers, the other one produces okay. But, you know, should we start that task of, of looking for the next well, and so this is, I have, we have a proposal for ninety-four hundred dollars. That was going to plan on proving that I wanted to comment, you mentioned to you guys first, first, but just to work with S E H to start that planning process so that. We can be ready for when we need to go forward on that, so. That would be for a well number nine, place to be determined, that'll be all part of this process, would be to figure out where that would go and. How we would fund it, C D B G, what have you, all those things. The A A R P challenge grant, I learned last week that we were not funded. On that, which was a little disappointing, I thought, being a A R P levelable community, I thought we'd, we'd have a, and with a project. This is for the sidewalk and trail project, that's going to be our thirteenth to eleventh and that sidewalk that, that we're going to be serving a lot, a lot of. People of all ages, especially those that are, so I, I thought, I thought it was a, I thought it was a great opportunity. On that, but they said they had a lot of applications, so I can appreciate that.
Turning over comments to you for us. Why didn't I accept this particular one?
No. No, just that there was a lot of people applying and. I, I responded back, but it was an automatic email, so it got kicked back to me, so I haven't any further feedback on that. Then in regards to that, we're going to be obtaining votes for doing that eleventh street sidewalk and the thirteenth to eleventh trail. We got to come up with a good name for that thirteenth to eleventh trail, haven't come up with that yet. But we're going to be getting quotes on that, and that's all to be under the bid threshold, so we don't have to formally bid it, we're getting votes, and so. I'm not, we're not going to put that on a workshop, we'll just bring that to the council for a meeting, we've talked about it enough, we've budgeted for it, so we'll bring those quotes back, but we, we want to keep moving on. Wind Fiber, as, as you know, Wind Fiber has, you know, location at the. City Hall Police Department, and where they have a lot of their main connections, and as part of the remodel, and we've, we've made them space in the basement. Feel hook up the power, it's down there, it's out of the way of everything else, around power, backup generation. And so we discussed about, you know, the idea of having a full location agreement, before they just kept it here, I thought, well. We're giving you power, we're giving you backup generation. You know, how about some free internet, and so this, this agreement is going to have a cost for, for that, for us housing them, and a cost for providing internet. Because we have eight sites now, and we're going to continue seven. One of them was for housing, they, they don't utilize it, so we dropped that one, but we'll be looking at a co-location maybe here up here in coming, coming weeks. Last, well, not second last thing. Legislative session is over, Cynthia, that's done, so they did, they did not approve anything for a property tax reform yet. Although we're unsure will be top issue next year, so all of our advocacy groups are still working on, you know, building those relationships and having that discussion and. I will, I will give the state legislature credit, because they didn't just push something through, they were very receptive. To municipalities and, and feedback saying, this is how this is going to be packed, and so they've made a lot of changes along the way. And, but it is something that's before front of their minds that they're going to accomplish something next, literally this season, so please keep that in mind. And lastly. The proposals for doing the city administrator search, I've reached out to four entities, I have three that are interested, and I have three proposals that. I have now received, so, so we have three firms, proposals we can look at Wednesday night and figure out a path forward, all of which I mentioned to them additionally. The thought of helping. Identify an interim solution. And so I already have them, a couple of them at least, you know, they're all familiar with doing that. They've already floated a couple of names out there, depending possible candidates that are maybe retired, you know, but still available, so. All things for you guys to consider on, on Wednesday night, so, so it'll be me on Wednesday, it will be a regular council meeting. Doesn't mean you have to take action, but if you want to take action, you'll be able to do so. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Anybody else with any border commissioner committee reports? I'm. Most certainly, sure. So. Maybe say I.
Hi.
Return is bring your umbrellas.
Would be like.